Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. We are calling this planning board meeting to order at 7:18 PM on November 27th, 2023. And now we're gonna all stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So our meeting is being recorded on Zoom. We have some people in Zoom. And also, it's been recorded via cable for Channel 6, I believe. And he's also going live on Facebook at the same time. Um, let's see. We have an A and R for Jennifer Landry?
Yep. That's up there.
That one?
401 Burnfield Road.
You hear?
Is anybody on?
No, that's not live.
Okay.
Your table, Alan?
No, no, we can do it. I, you know.
What is, what are they doing?
We're gonna do Zoom, too, so.
Is anybody on Zoom for 401 Burnfield Road?
For 401 Burnfield Road.
Yes, please. Can you hear us?
For 401 Burnfield Road. Yes, please. Can you hear us?
Not very well. Not clear. Does it say? What is it about?
So it's that one.
Yeah, but what are they doing? Are they subdividing?
Yeah. So this is the, um, this is the existing lot parcel. And then they're just cutting it.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically. They have frontage. Things are fine.
First control.
Yeah. It's a setback order.
I think we can put that area as plenty at 30 in the front. 20, 20 on the sides and the back. It doesn't matter. Do they have that offset for the water department? Is that a dotted line that says?
Uh, groundwater overlay protection district.
That's right, yeah, for me.
But the house is existing, so.
That's a Harvard. Yeah.
This is just a common law.
Yeah. Good for me.
All right. I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R for 401 Burnfield Road.
Second?
All in favor?
The Chi Hocker, aye.
King, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. 23rd.
It's a 27th.
27?
27th.
Yeah, I'm reading 27 here. And I hear 23rd. It's okay. Did you say we have another one?
We have two more.
Two more? They're not here, right?
No, because they came after the agenda was closed.
I'll sign at the end, so we don't make the client wait. Because the client is not here anyway, right? For this?
Keys.
No.
Want to just move those to the other table?
Are we, she's here, because I can do her, too.
Yeah.
Well, that's the last one that I have. That's Keys Road.
Do we, do we have anybody on Zoom for this one?
What do you hear?
For John Clark?
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Can you just give us an overview of what you're doing?
Um, yep. So that would be just three lots split off of a 47-acre property.
Okay.
He's fine.
Yeah, it's a proper acre to have proper frontage, right? They all have 150 feet?
No, one is not.
One is not, one's 134.
Oh. Is that?
Is this in the? Is it rural, right?
John, is this in, this is in rural, right?
Uh, I believe so.
Okay, because you need 150 feet of frontage.
That's what it says.
Yep, there, there should be 150 feet on those lots.
Then there's a typo.
No, there's 134.59.
Yeah, and then there's a, there's an arc there.
That's what, what is it?
Oh, I see.
Plus 16.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a straight line, and then there's an arc.
Okay.
That's right. It is okay.
Okay.
It's not straight, that's what it is.
I suppose if you take 16, it's, um.
134 plus 16.
Yeah. It's 150. All right, so we good?
Yep.
All right, so I'll make a motion. Where is? Oh, we don't even have an address, right? Okay, so I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R for John and Colleen Clark.
On Keys Road.
On Keys Road.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
King, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. You can sign those at the end. Next, we have another A and R.
You're all set, John Clark.
Great, great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Mike Cho, Rebecca, I'm the surveyor that prepared this A and R plan. So the situation here is located at 87 Pleasant Street for Carol Salisbury, she has a tenant. She's looking to split her existing lot, as shown on the plan. On the original lot, which is known as tax lot 22.1, we're keeping the existing dwelling on that own lot with the required frontage. And remaining area exceeds 10,000 square feet. And then the other lot, we're putting the garage on its own lot, because they would like to convert that into an apartment.
Upstairs.
So you can't have two dwellings on one lot, so we're splitting the existing lot. We gave the proposed lot 65 feet of frontage, which is required by the bylaw, and then we have just over 10,000 square feet.
So this is the original property, this?
Correct. Yep. So the only new line is the straight down in between the two structures.
It should be 65.
What do you have?
75. There was such change.
Yeah, it's got to be 75. Small family, Jamal, 75.
Can you look on the website? Yeah, that's where I got it. Can you look on the website?
Yeah, because we thought it was 65.
You thought it was 65, too, right?
Yeah.
So share this screen and look for it here, so people can see it, too.
What page is that?
It says page 10, but I don't know what it's from.
Oh, no, don't tell me I looked at the wrong chart. Uh, for some reason, on page 40, it says 65.
Yeah, this is it, 75.
Does it say anywhere 65 or any other thing?
I don't see it.
What page did you look at? Uh, 40. Go down to page 40. I'm sorry, it said, well, PDF is page 40, it's page number 36. Okay, do it with me. That one?
Yeah, but what is section left?
I might have, and that might have something to do with the open space.
Yeah.
Because I got misled and looked at the wrong chart here. We're gonna have to change it.
Okay.
We can, I mean, it's doable, it's just the boards are there.
Yeah, I, I think it's a brainer, you just put it in an angle.
Yeah, we can.
Take eight feet over here, just instead of going parallel, you go through an angle. See, you need 10 more feet here.
Yeah.
So you put in 10 feet, that's 10 feet. So about that, and then you just make the line over here to get the same square footage or whatever.
Yeah.
Actually add a little bit of square footage.
Well, I'm, what I'm saying is going in an angle.
Yeah.
So it gains over here, but loses over there.
Oh, I see, oh, so we switch from here to here.
Yeah, exactly, from here to here, 10 feet here, 10 feet here.
Now, what about this? This is like butted right up against the property line. Is that a problem?
Yeah, but we're not, we're not, yeah, we're not, we're not making, sorry, the issue.
The only thing to do is the commissioner could say there's no windows on that side, but that's easy. It makes sense not to have windows that close to the neighbor anymore.
There's a neighbor right here, probably. All right, so I guess at 10 feet, we, yeah, we come back.
We gotta fix that.
Yeah, just flipping that line, and I think we'll be okay. You can just send it, you don't have to come over, we'll just go for it.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the only change you make, I think, then it's gonna be fine.
Okay, great.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I looked at the wrong chart.
Yeah, I looked at that, too, and I thought it was 65.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that's an open space.
Section. No problem.
Okay.
Glad you caught it, because we have to fix the memory. No, it's just you gotta record it, so you have bigger video from more public people, but the bad plans work through the teeth.
It's a minor problem.
You wouldn't be allowed, don't worry.
Thank you.
And like I said, you don't really even have to say it immediately, just send the plans and deal with my.
Yeah, I'll probably bring them back tomorrow, if that's okay.
We're meeting in two or three weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's December 11th. I just gotta get it back over here. All right, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we got one more?
Nope.
No, that was it, okay. So since we don't have a majority, we can't.
Well, we open the public hearing and we continue it.
Okay.
So if you want to open it, and I'll make a motion to continue.
So we are gonna open a public hearing on special permit number 312 on site plan approval number 70 for Architectural Insights at Level C under section 13 of the town of Warren zoning bylaws. The applicant is seeking a special permit for the relocation of the kitchen to the rear of the unit. Make the rear until legal if applicable. 942 Main Street Warrant. A copy of the application may be inspected in the office of the planning board or town clerk's office during normal business hours.
Oh, this should probably say make the rear unit legal.
Probably, yep.
Let me see that. Did they send you this? Just they used the word until instead of unit.
Oh, okay.
I think that's what. Okay, so we need a super majority to approve special permits and really even to hear them?
Yes, and.
So I'll, since we don't have that, I will make a motion to continue special permit, continue the hearing on special permit number 312 and a site plan number 70 until December 11th, 2023, which is our next meeting.
I have a question.
Right?
No, I already did all the abutter notifications and legal notices.
That's okay.
I don't have to redo them.
Nope, you don't.
Okay, all right.
No, just the first time, and then people have to come and pay attention to get, yeah, you're good.
All right, so December 11th, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I, that's my motion. I need a second.
Second?
All in favor?
King, aye.
Richi Hocker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. The public hearing has been closed for now, until next meeting.
No, continue.
Continue. I'm sorry, the public hearing has been continued until next meeting.
December 11th.
December 11th. Is anybody on Zoom that wants to talk? I think somebody in Zoom wants to.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sure. Who, who are you?
Hi, hi, Derek. This is Rebecca, I was there calling in. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person, I apologize. I just had a generic question about the public hearing that was just continued. The, the hearing notice says under section 13, and I'm just curious as to, to, what that entails, because that's the MCOD, and it sounds to me like something, like you're just trying to.
No, that is.
Again, I'm not sure that that's the proper application.
Thank you, Becky. Let us check that out. Rick is doing that right now.
Yeah, it's Mill Conversion Overlay District.
Do we have all of that right there?
Maybe the A and R. Maybe the application. That's what the application says. I don't know what it would be under.
Is, is that for the Wright Mill Compact?
No, 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 this is, um, this is on Main Street. This is above the cash market.
Yeah, I believe this section is wrong.
It is. I don't know what it would be, maybe section five, or, um.
The building inspector is the one who describes that section.
Well, I would assume it would be section 1.5 producing non-conforming to start with.
Yeah.
And section 1.5 for site plan review.
Copy that.
Well, okay, so.
Copy that.
Is that an echo? Yeah, it's an echo. It's an echo.
Copy that.
So the section under here is wrong?
Yeah, um.
Okay.
Now you may need to re-advertise it.
Okay.
You have to find.
Can you, can, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
It's better now.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, there was a lot of awful, um, lot of background noise, sorry.
No problem.
I don't know if they need to refile.
Can we check?
Yeah.
Because I, to me, it's like probably just a typo in there.
I know, but they did put that on the application.
The, the, the client did?
Yeah. Did, did, did you see this? Did this go Lori first?
Uh, Jim did it, read it over first.
Okay. So this is gonna be.
Did the building, put that through as a zoning review?
Yeah, this, this happened months ago, and then they, and it was determined they needed to file for a special permit, and then we're just seeing it now. So it took them a while to file, I guess. So, yeah, they, they did go to the building inspector.
Would that be zoning finding? Because that would be, that would probably pose a couple more questions, why she would find in that favor.
I can't imagine, yeah. Okay, I think you're gonna have to call Architectural Insights and find out what's going on. And we're gonna have to determine what to do with this.
Okay.
I, I would maybe suggest that the board review, too. I mean, your young lady here, she, she's new, so, I mean, there's a lot to take in.
Yeah, I think this was probably filed before she started, or.
Yep, but, I mean, this is, you know, a couple of times this has been an error, so.
Yeah. Yeah, this is October 16th, or November, yeah.
Yeah.
When did you start?
We're 23rd.
Ah, a week later, okay, yeah.
So as a lesson learned, when you get these applications, you know, and everything that we put, you know, just double check, cross-reference, ask the building inspector, or, you know, Jimmy, the administrator, just to make sure that it's right.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it's gotta go to you first. These have to go to you, so you can give them a once-over.
Okay.
Because Lori doesn't know.
No.
She's just gonna stamp it, right?
Yeah. Just do what we did. We, we went online, looked for the, you know, what, what it was under, and if you can't find it, email us, and we'll just find out.
Okay.
What it is, if we are not sure.
So this is good, like they did the site plan checklist and stuff, so that's things that we would need.
So that means just a kitchen, right?
Yeah.
It's moving it, and it wasn't in the first place. There was a discussion of whether there should be an apartment there, too, so.
Yeah.
Lots of things were involved.
Yeah, but it, but it's so little.
I know, I understand. I understand.
Okay, thank you, Becky, for the observation.
I, you're, you're very welcome. I, I would, I would, I wouldn't want anybody to violate open meeting laws. We've already continued the meeting, so I would be glad to love talking about it.
Yeah.
But, um, maybe, until Ms. Maureen is, um, got her feet wet a little bit more, maybe perhaps the board should maybe take a look at it.
Yep.
As you know, the permit process, the site plan review is a, is a time and, uh, and a costly adventure. So, um, as a taxpayer, I would hate to see any more delay for, on, for anybody.
Yes, thank you very much, Becky. We appreciate your expertise.
You're very welcome. Have a good evening, gentlemen. And Mrs. King?
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. Good night, ma'am.
Good night. Okay, moving on. Comments and concerns? Does the board have any comments or concerns? Yeah?
No.
I have no comments or concerns. Does the public have any comments and concerns? Anybody on Zoom has comments and concerns?
No.
Hearing none? We're gonna go straight into the payroll, bills and budget.
I do have abutter notifications that we got from surrounding towns, too.
Oh, okay.
That's gonna save that.
We can do that. Well, okay, under comments and concerns.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want to get. So, um, for payroll, budget, and bills, it would help to have like a list of everything we need to pay?
Okay.
Do you have them?
I have everything, yes.
Okay. Okay, so the, the question is, do we want these? We don't really need to review those. It's just stuff going on in other towns.
So the planning board of where we hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 5th. That's.
But like one of them's for somebody building a house. The only interesting one I saw was that Walmart's expanding. But again, I don't know that, that, it doesn't really have a, for the, her town.
Yeah, it's a good courtesy of them to let us know, but, you know.
Yeah.
Check it out?
Sure.
So Sarah and I had talked about it, and I just said we, we should bring it up and just, is it okay if we, we don't need to really review them at a meeting or anything?
Yeah, we, no, we don't.
So if you see something interesting in one of those, just email it out.
Okay.
We, we could talk about it if we want. I mean, but otherwise, it's.
Payroll, I just have my time sheets that need to be signed. I don't know.
Oh, okay, all right. Yeah, that's fine. You don't have amounts or anything?
No. So you want like a monthly amount or a bi-weekly amount, or?
Yeah.
All right.
Is, these are all of them?
Those are my copies. They're both building and planning, that are just together by weeks. BJ already said. B J already signed off on all of her side.
So this is everything for, oh, this is hers, signature. So the ones approved by her, we don't have to look at?
No. They're just attached to it.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve and sign the payroll for Sarah Moran.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Brinkley, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye. Approved.
These are all invoices.
All right, do you want me to read all these, or do you just want to make, I can make a motion to pay the current invoices? Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Yep.
You can make a, a short list of what it is, so we read the client or the.
All right, and you want, like, I can put that on the agenda, and you want the amounts on the agenda and stuff?
Yes.
Or, okay.
If you look at old, um, agendas, you can see how she'll do it.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to pay current invoices for W B Mason, Turley Publications, Cooley Dickinson, O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakham Associates.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
Brinkley, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
Any other bills?
And if you have questions for the agenda, just ask Jimmy, the administrator.
Oh, you got the agenda there. Yeah, we're on to minutes.
So we're gonna approve the minutes, I, I was absent. So I can't.
Oh, okay. Oh, but we don't have quorum.
Right, so it'd have to be.
Okay, we'll have to do this next time.
Yeah, table them for next meeting.
Although my name's spelled incorrectly.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's the only thing I see.
Okay, I'll fix that.
Okay, so we'll approve those next time.
Next meeting will be on December eleventh, seven fifteen. And we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Brinkley, aye.
Richai Hacker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.